Everybody, please rise. Take your place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
George, would you please say his name?
Sure.
Good morning, gentlemen, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank and praise you for all the gifts that you give to us. We pray that you watch over the activities this evening as we take on the matters at hand for the city that we represent and the citizens that are represented as well. We just pray that you guide us in all of those decisions and help them feed blessings to you. Amen. We pray. Amen.
All right, reading and approval minutes from October, please.
Motion to approve and suspend the reading.
Motion by all.
Second.
Second by pillar, discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Name aye. All right, approval of the agenda, any additions or corrections or changes? I'm gonna move Mr. Birch up in front of the engineers report. He's gonna, he has another meeting, so I was told, yeah. So we'll get you out here. So we'll put their old contacts up here. Any others? Okay.
Motion to accept the agenda with that change in order.
Motion by all. Second. Second by start, discussion. All in favor of this agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same assignment. Thank you. Okay, with that, Mr. Birch, do you want...
I used to be pretty darn faithful about coming to these meetings. But I haven't been doing so good lately. In fact, when I reflect back, when we were doing the new construction bill, it seems like I was here more often giving an update. Can you believe we've been there three and a half years now already? It's like, seriously? It's interesting, I was, I happened to drop something behind my desk, between the desk and my wall, and there was a picture down there, and I did up, and it was the picture of the old hospital and the old area view that used to hang on my wall, but it was nice to reflect back. And I still have all of those photos from the phase construction. So it's really cool to see how it was and how it is and that transition from getting to point A to point B. But, you know, all in all, the new facility is working out really good. I can't imagine us providing care in any other place right now. Do we wish there were things that we would change? Certainly. Storage, heaven forbid if you ever built enough storage, whether it's in a facility or your house or whatever. But, you know, all in all, that gallery or something of the whole, our patient booths are awesome. And it's just, it's just really needed. And I want to thank you guys again for your financial support and just for the overall support that you guys gave way back for the construction project. It's a wonderful addition to Hazen and Mercer County, and hopefully you all three as well too. You know, we got done with our whole country remodeling and expansion, but if you recall, we did remodeling inside the Co Country Clinic. We doubled the size and capacity of that clinic in Beulah, and so we have a lot more space to provide regular care for behavioral health services there as well too. So I wanna just let you know that normally in October, we have our annual meeting that comes up at the end of October. That is being pushed back to November. It's for a couple of different reasons. We're getting done with our financial audit, and if there are some things that are still at the federal level that auditors don't quite know how to book, some of the provider relief funds we got and some of those things. So it's nothing to do with our organization, it's just trying to get clarity on some of those things that are happening. But we're gonna do our meeting virtually, like everybody else does, so stay tuned. Many of you are members of the Hazen Morant Hospital Company Association, so you'll be getting something in the mail. But that meeting will be virtual instead. The other thing I wanna just mention to you as well too, is within a few weeks, there will be a new CEO joining our organization. There will be a transition plan in place that I'll work with this new individual. But I've indicated to our board from the beginning of the year that it was my intention to retire when I turn 65, and that happened a month ago. But I'm not gonna hurry to go anywhere. I'm gonna work with the new person that's coming in and then also be available in the future, because my wife and I don't plan on going anywhere. We love this area, and we plan on staying here for some time. So just stay tuned for someone new joining us, and once we see the whites of their eyes, I'll come and bring him and introduce him to you guys as well. But just kind of reserving name and all that good stuff until we know someone's gonna show up for you. The other thing I wanna talk about that's no surprise to many is COVID. And we're all tired of hearing of COVID. But I just want to really hold up our staff and all of our healthcare organizations right now. They do an awesome job in some very stressful situations in providing care to our patients, wearing masks all day long. You know, some of us growls, me included, when we wear masks going into meetings like this or going to the grocery store and et cetera. But our staff has really taken up the challenge and has really been faithful about protecting, not only themselves, but protecting the patients that we care for as well too, in wearing masks, washing hands more frequently, distancing when they come, and et cetera. And I'm not here to advocate that that's what you guys do. I'm not gonna ask that you would mandate anything, because I will pour it at night, but not last night, because it's the time and place to do it. However, I do think it's important to just share the importance of the general public doing that. And again, it's not necessarily to protect other part, themselves and others in case we're positive as well. And we have had a great deal of positives in Mercer County. I added up the last week, and there have been 112 positive cases in Mercer County over the last week. And if you divide that by seven days, that's a pretty high average per day. We have the fourth highest positivity rate per 10,000 folks in North Dakota. The county is the fourth highest. And that's not a distinction that I think that we wanna be, or are proud of. There's 138 active cases per 10,000. I think it's something we all need to be, continue to be calm about, because I don't think it's gonna go away anytime soon. And as our healthcare workers can tell you better than I can, with the influenza season coming and et cetera, there will be more challenges that they will face. If you have loved ones that are in the nursing home or in senior suites, reach out to them. This is a really hard time for the residents, whether it's in our nursing home, Nyger Healthcare Center at Moore in senior suites. You know, visitation has been very limited there, and they've needed to minimize their interactions with others. And certainly, it's a challenging time, not only for staff, but again for residents. And that loneliness, not being able to have the family visitation like normal, is disgusting. And again, back to staffing, because of the high positive rate in Mercer County, the staff at Nyger Healthcare Center and at senior suites now needs to be tested twice per week just to maintain safety. That's a state requirement that that has to happen based on the positivity rate in that county. So if anybody ever had had one test and said, boy, the state of that maple swab up there sure wasn't even fun. Imagine getting that pleasure twice a month. But until our positivity rate goes down in Mercer County, that's what all of that staff has to do. And there needs to be 100% participation from our staff and our residents as well too. So it makes it even more challenging. Anyway, I'll get off that topic right now. I just wanted to take some time and share some of those things with you and certainly be open to answering any questions that you guys may have.
Well, Jerome, can you tell us a little bit about our capacity right now and how your hospital staff is doing?
You know, I'm glad you brought that up, because that's one of the bullet points I had here, Jerry, that I forgot to mention. So you cheated off my paper. You know, there's been some confusion out and about about reporting that ends up being mandated from the state. And there also seems to be some confusion based on what social media throws out about it. So for example, let me provide some social media clarification. Hospitals do not hope that there's more positives in the area yet, and we don't get paid per positive as a hospital. We don't get paid anymore for any positives. In fact, our mission at Co Country and at SMC is to keep people down. So it's discourting when I see some of that stuff back there about social media. Doctors do not get bonuses based on the number of positive cases that there are in the county or in a clinic or anything like that. That's not the case. Now, when it comes to reporting of available beds, you know, there was some confusion at the state level as far as what should facilities or hospitals report to the state? Because the state wants to try to maintain what is capacity of the healthcare delivery system. So some people for a period of time were reporting here the number of licensed beds, and for SMC, that's 13. Then there's the amount of available beds that you would have at any particular point in time. Now, that's dependent upon what the available staffing you have. So what we're reporting now and are reporting today was three. That we have three beds available based on the staffing that we have. As you can imagine, when we have staff members that are, that are close contacts of a positive, they need to quarantine for 14 days, and then they are not available to provide care at our facility, whether that's a nurse, whether that's a provider, whether that's a dietary worker or a housekeeper. They have to quarantine just like the rest of our staff do. So when we report the number of available beds, we have some patients in the hospital right now, but based on what we have available for staffing, we think we could pay three more patients. Now, for us, that's adequate, because we don't have that many admissions per day and et cetera. So thanks for asking that question, but that's what's reported right now to the state is available staff beds. Now, do we have a challenge in the state when it comes to facilities needing to transfer a patient to a higher level of care? Absolutely. There are some times that if we have someone that's presented at the hospital that has a trauma or has cardiac arrest or stroke, it's sometimes challenging to find a bed available in Bismarck for that patient to go. And there have been periods of time we've had to transfer a patient to that higher level of care department. There is a capacity challenge sometimes from a state-wide perspective, but all in all, we've been able to transfer a patient to appropriate one.
Thank you.
You bet.
Do you, I know you're not a doctor, but what are you hearing from your providers and your professionals about what we in our communities could do better to just be safer other than distancing and wearing masks? Is there anything else we should be considering?
Again, it's important that it's best that anybody can to avoid large gatherings of people, because it takes just a couple of people to be positive, even displaying no symptoms, for someone to be positive interacting with others to spread the virus. So avoiding large groups is certainly something that's important. Distancing, total distancing is important. Certainly, there's schools going on right now, and there's, you know, kids that go to school, come home, and you never know what happens. But the importance of frequently hand washing as well, and the best that you can when you're interacting with others, obviously not at home in your house, et cetera, but wearing masks. Again, it's not something that's comfortable or comfortable to do, but it provides protection for yourself, but more importantly, it provides protection for the person you're interacting with if in fact you are positive yourself, because you may not know. And any of us could be positive or have been positive, and we don't know it, and it just impacts people. But sadness me is the number of deaths that we see state-wide that have taken place from COVID. And it's all kinds of age groups, and certainly it's the elderly population.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Birch?
Jerome, can you share with us if you are currently treating any COVID patients or how many there might be in a local hospital?
We currently do not have any patients in the hospital that are COVID positive.
If there was one that needed a ventilator or a higher degree of treatment, would you be able to do that locally or would they be returned out?
You know, the thing is, we wanna provide care for the patient that we know we can care for appropriately. When someone presents with acute onset of COVID, chances are their condition is gonna continue to deteriorate. And we don't have 24/7 ventilators support and et cetera, et cetera. So our, what we would end up doing is transferring that patient onto a higher level of care in Bismarck. You know, if the patient, there's a patient that's stable and maybe has recovered from COVID, we can provide that stabilization that's needed before someone comes home. But our providers also know that COVID is a very progressive and quickly progressive disease, and we wanna make sure that the higher level of care with infection control doc or et cetera, et cetera, are available to help take care of this person.
If the patient is diagnosed locally, then go somewhere else for treatment, who gets the credit for the reporting of that?
It's wherever the person lives. For example, if you would end up going to Bismarck to be tested, you would show up in Mercer County. So let's do whatever your home address is, that's where it's taken.
Mr. Birch, is it true we have one ventilator at our hospital?
We have a ventilator that would be available for ER or two patients, and we have one that we use in our four as well.
All right, any else for you, Jerome? Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to come. And you know what, thank you guys for what you do too. These times that are especially hard for all of us. Thanks for listening.
Absolutely. I might continue our discussion on some COVID issues, but we'll do that later down the agenda. 5A, engineers report. Sure.
Anything?
Really?
Great, so I'm done with my report with me, so leave my phone here, that's all right. Basically, not a lot going on. We have the Public Special Assessment Committee, or Committee, like review, they finalize their stuff. It's being published and advertised for the council's or commission's final approval on 30th. So when we're listening to him, they were gonna pass along some comments or recommendations or changes, so that'll be ultimately, you know, up to you guys and expect some people, I guess, next Friday night, potentially. So any questions about that? I know most of you guys are there. Few construction things resurfaced, and we're just kinda looking through that right now, but nothing to bring up at the moment, I don't think. Let's see, next thing I have on my list is just that repairs on 11th, not related to your street project, related to expedition states project. We hired a contractor to do the work, and Mike has been corresponding with them, I called them this afternoon too. Still planning to come, about this time of year when things get too cold, they shut down their plants, and they heat up asphalt to 300 degrees, takes a ton of energy, can't do it beyond a certain point. They're not closing things down. I mean, with the snow, this is the end of the world. They can basically pave when temperatures are 30 degrees and rising, if they do the right things. So still fair chance that that work gets done. If it's not 30 degrees and rising, we probably won't let them pave out there. The scope of work is there's two manholes that have to be adjusted, and then they're gonna fill in all areas around those and those spots. And so it's like 17,000 bucks for the work. Not a huge dollar in all, but I know you guys are hoping they've done before winter. And so as of right now, I just don't know.
If the temperatures don't cooperate, for the sake of our folks drying the bottles and stuff like that, is there any type of temporary repair that could be done to at least give us a quite a chance of not wrecking something?
The worst thing is those two manholes, just to break. And I suppose we could dig them out, put a steel plate on them, and just be done with them, but then we wouldn't have access to them.
Could they be lowered and just say packed on with our recycled material? That packs for the dirt just to get through the winter?
Good.
Just so we could actually blade over them, because otherwise it's gonna be tough.
I'd like us just to make sure we got a backup plan just in case.
I don't know if you want them to do it, if you guys can do it, but just saw around them and...
If they could lower them or whatever, we could pack, we can put some recycling on them or something like that, but I'd rather see them do the lowering or cutting and lowering.
Okay, all right. I mean, we'd add like a guy to pick up for a couple hours to, you know, do that work, but I guess... They're not the bad guy, and they're just fixing problems that somebody else did, so I'm not gonna hold against them. They'll probably fix it a little bit or something, but the work has to be done anyways, so, okay. Mike, that's a good idea. Oh, that's my list. If for some reason they can't come, tell them that's what we want. Um, let's see here, next thing I have on my list is just a reminder, Bowers, can we even spring through those water service insulating things? We've got some conversations yet this winter on payments and, you know, how we're gonna contact those people, hope that we're putting them down. So I'm just trying to keep that on the radar here. 2019, small town revitalization endeavor to enhance transportation systems, the streets program. So you should have the cost participation maintenance agreement on the agenda here for this evening. And what it's basically saying is that you guys will pay your share. DOT is gonna continue to maintain, they've been maintaining. You'll pay for the improvements, you'll clean the snow off bike trails, you'll mow in these areas, you'll mow in these areas. It really doesn't change anything except it all means responsibilities for the new products or the new items that are out there. You guys kinda officially approved the whole budget and all this stuff a few months ago. This is just the paperwork that goes up there.
So any more actions that...
I think, well, I know they're waiting for the signed up.
Okay.
So, Pat had a chance to review it. It's pretty straightforward.
It's weather based. It's weather based, yeah.
But we don't need a motion.
I don't know.
You mind if I...
Yeah, you're signing a contract, I mean, it's a agreement with them, I would say, yeah.
So what we made a motion on before is just a budget aspect of it.
No, you're just approving the need to be agreed.
Okay, all right.
Because until the projects develop, that budget may change. Let's see, do we have...
Move to approve, agree now.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by its strength, second by all, discussion. Roll call.
It's turn.
Aye.
Well.
Aye.
Hillary.
Aye.
Hold on, Howard.
All right. We mentioned this before, but what they'll do is they'll start with kind of a walkthrough. I assume they'll, DOT will schedule a meeting with you, they'll design a new policy, they'll hire an engineer. Love to attend, be a part of that and help steer it. But the odds are they won't hire us to do it because we're an engineer and that we don't want somebody else involved. Kind of the beginning going. Otherwise, my list here is just water storage site, got the boundary survey stuff done. There's a couple easements out there we're just looking at. Might not need one of these, because we may have a rope that wouldn't work, but I don't have a map or anything, not really ready for that, but the boundary work is done, so it's progressing, I guess. There'll just be two property descriptions at some point, so I'm gonna secure these for most of us. That's all I have, but I plan to stick around with annexation hearing afterwards because everybody wants to. Thank you.
Okay, we can either, well, we can't start early on that annexation hearing, really, just as part. We're gonna start with the report, so, I guess. So let's go water sewer.
Just wanted to share, we received at the city, our garbage employees, a very nice little thank you card from a student here in Hazen. Says, "Thank you for taking out our garbage. If we did not have you, our garbage would be full. I appreciate your job, keep it up." So it's always encouraging. You know, sometimes some of those jobs within our city are seemingly thankless jobs, and so this is very much appreciated. I know the folks at the shop have a copy of that. Maybe they're framing it, putting it up the wall. That's all I have.
Thank you. Streets, well, Jason's not here, but Dave, anything or...
We're just...
Picking up weeds?
Still picking up weeds, getting equipment, electric equipment, snowboard and everything, pretty much ready. Got a sand bin hole next to the sole, so that's pretty much ready. We had an outfit done Monday. Came in with a new street sweeper and asked if they could demo it. Of course, they were in the neighborhood, wondering if they were interested and just watching them demo it. Pretty impressive truck.
Did they do the whole city?
They did, on 45 blocks, and they were there for about half the day. Trucks have come a long way with the current equipment that we have, but...
Yeah, our, you know, our vacuum truck is... Is that the 80s model?
Like, 86.
Do they operate and trade it for a value for existing machines?
Actually, the one salesman was there with, and he was gonna just throw some prices together like what ours would be worth. I said, well, we wouldn't need a brand new machine.
Yeah.
Idea was out there for good use, three, four years old, that they do have some lease programs available too. And he was gonna throw something together, just so we had something to look at for the following, following budget or following year.
I'm assuming ours is worth at least $1,000. For crack to the $220,000 for that new machine or...
But yeah, that truck that they brought in actually was, one guy could do with that one truck what both our stability would do. Actually, they could replace most of the rest of the wagon. Pretty impressive.
All right, I have a question. Please, fire.
Nothing to add this night.
Are we still cutting trees and planting trees right now, or are we...
I haven't talked to Mike.
He's pretty well done planting, and he's just cleaning up some for winter, wrapping all smaller trees.
Okay. Thank you. HCD, Buster?
No updates.
Okay. I have a few items I wanna discuss, and I'll just bring a couple up, then we'll pause for the annexation public hearing. First, I did receive a phone call from Mercer County the other day. They did ask, she called and talked to me about a polling place to have here at City Hall. And if we determine that the COVID numbers are escalating to the point where the governor moves us to a new color or reduces the amount of people in a facility, if we still want to have it in our City Hall, I said, absolutely. I, I, I just, it wasn't an official request that she sent to a meeting. She called me on the phone, so I just spoke for us, uh, in our community, like, if we have to limit the people inside the building at that time, fine. Uh, she did say that they, they will have hand sanitizer, they'll have sign, signage on the floors. Uh, people e- enter and exit the building, uh, and enter one door and exit a different door. Um, so they are, they're preparing for, for that, so. Just a heads up. Um, I'm gonna pause now and so if we can table, okay, what, is that the proper?
We'll get your recess.
Okay, we're gonna recess our regular meeting. And we are going to, uh, conduct our annexation public hearing, and we'll open the, open that meeting now. So welcome to all of you that joined us this evening to the annexation hearing. Uh, at this time, we will take public comment. And, um, for those, those are proposed for, for the annexation process. Um, Mr. Link is here as well. He is, he is a special that was hired to do a lot of the, the survey and drawings. And, uh, if you have questions for us, please feel free. So if it's, if you wanna speak, please raise your hand, I'll call on you. And if you've done, let us know your name. Uh, I can tell most people's faces with the mask on even, even if they decide to wear a Vikings mask and they're that proud of themselves. Or they're ashamed on the other. Who would like to speak?
We have letters from some of them.
I guess we wanna speak for the, the hires.
Sure, go ahead. Any rap?
We don't feel that his area should be annexed, and the reason for it is the land is not accessible from city streets. And just, uh, he doesn't, on that part of the section land, he doesn't, he don't give the city, uh, services. So, it's a little bit blank to that part of it, just it's, it's actually land, it's, uh, floodplain. Could really be in the ways, just to pass your land.
This, this is the image up here of the parcel. So I think you mentioned that that's part of the land that does not receive services?
Right, that, that part that we saw, there was, there's no city street that connects to it. Nothing, there's nothing that most city services make them attached to that.
Yeah, would someone like to expound on that for the hires?
Well, I guess maybe I will, there is, you know, then I guess, like, this was probably, probably been, it's like my idea. It's not because I, I was just one. This one is, you guys in the city, but, um, in these lots over here, we don't know the legal, the legal, I guess, the legal, I guess, descriptions of these lots. So then, what we do know is this quarter line right there. And so we're able to spell it out, um, and it's one other thing is, I mean, because you got the city, um, city, I mean, it's like limits up here too, you know, and it's more for you, you know, then, and then also, I guess, joining you too. It's to some extent in the west side as well.
So then, uh, how, why are they making lots out of that piece? The lots are on the other side of that. Up to the, um, border there.
Well, you got the lots, lots in the cul-de-sac, you got.
Yeah, some of them are not mine anymore.
No, no, it's not, no. And then you got some down in here, you know, it's got a, a street or a alleyway that leads down to a shop down there as well, too.
And that shop's not here neither.
No.
Oh.
But even if they just draw it off, they're just draw it, it dip that dent you got in there should be towards the west. Going to.
Are you talking?
Fence comes down and then it goes to the, to the west a little ways, or twenty feet, and then it goes south.
Talking here?
Put your fence left, part together, up, uh, to the west now, right there.
Okay.
That, that goes towards the west.
This way?
Yeah, and then downstream to the fence line.
That, that may be a fence line, is that, is that the?
That's my fence.
The boundary proper line of ownership? Can't miss a link, if you.
Yeah, may I step up there?
Please.
This boundary line coming down here is the east side of the U伯first edition.
Yep.
And then this jogs out where it was annexed uh, back when Axon owned it. And it came down to this north, this old right way, the highway and back like this. And out, and then along the quarter line out to here. There's property that we dig owns now, and it can leave over here, and then a little bit further east, and then goes up like this. That's Weegar's, not yours. And then this here, going here is a confused mess, and Anderson owns the garage down there. So what you're saying, Lester, is correct, but the fence line is over here. There's no distinction on this parcel between Weegar's property and your property.
Yeah, I, I got.
Do you understand?
That's ten.
Okay.
Yeah, they're all dug up over there too, and they're not covered again. Not much of these dug up. Well, the pins are dug up and the holes are there yet. They should have been covered up, because some, anything would go to disturb that hole. And they'd disturb the pins. Those yellow pins.
Mr. Hires, your home is not at the limits.
No.
Would you receive any services there from the city?
Garbage, water I dug in myself.
Yeah.
That's, that's it.
Yeah.
Without to be on that market yet, for that.
Right, yeah. And actually, we did talk about more of that area to be brought in. And we, we did.
It's worth playing, so there's really no point, so it's not gonna be done with it.
But his house is not floodplated, but that's not, that's not in this.
Just the house.
Right, right.
If he has a building up, it's.
Right. Well, there's others in town that floodplates in the city limits. Is that, is that?
But there's also no street that goes to his house, he has highway. So he's not getting street cleaning, street, you know, anything else.
You're, you're right.
He doesn't receive that. He doesn't get street lights.
You're right, he doesn't get street light backs. He's, he does receive the, you know, police and fire from, from town.
Wouldn't that be from the county?
Well, not, not accounting for fire. That'd be city.
Combined.
Combined. Yeah. Any other creatures wanna? Comment?
You know, I guess, you know, I guess, or just like they have, I mean, I mean, you are kind of in the middle of town to some extent, you know, I mean, I mean, you got, you know, I mean, I mean, like, just right over here, it's like west, you got, you know, I guess, this is all, I guess, at city limits, and then up there to the north side as well.
So, okay, so that gets annexed, yeah. That part gonna be city? Taxes, what's happening there, that's what I don't want.
Yes, this will be city.
No, I don't want that.
Well, I guess.
I got my points.
I have something to say on that. Um, you're saying that he's on the west side along the city, but none of that road actually attaches to him, of his land. That's all Warren and Anderson and Henry Crowes.
Over.
You know, his is beyond all that, he doesn't have access to a street from that area.
No, but I mean, he, he could still go drive, drive the, drive the, uh, down that street.
To the building?
No, but.
But the building's not his.
No, I understand that.
You can't go past the building though, and ask for the street and that. So really along his land, there's no street access to it. You know what I mean?
Yeah, fine, yeah. I do, you know, I mean, you know, I think he's a part of the town, you know, and I think everyone wants to be in town and, uh, you know, I guess, you know, I mean, I guess, then let's have for all the town, it all went, it's not, it's not a, it's a change now.
I mean, especially if the pot best is pasture land, that's what we're talking about, is pasture.
So he could take and build something on it, or sell it to, for someone to build, it'd be a different story.
Yeah. And you pay taxes on that city tax, right?
Yeah.
You paying county tax, one of the things.
You know, and there's really, there's no access to it, it's not that part of it, unless you go through the ditch, really. From what we're seeing anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, but I can see your point, and, you know, we'll go with both, you know. You know, you know, but I just can't. I can't say that you're not the zero, I guess, zero benefits, you know, of some.
Oh, yeah.
From the city. Well.
But what, what benefits?
Jerry already, I guess, you know.
On that portion there?
Fire.
No, well, that's just like the person that lives, Tyler, lives over there. Is he at the limits? He just saying thing, fire and, or the two, right? He lives just outside it. So what's the difference between that and? Well.
Yeah, there's no.
There's not.
So it's.
There's no.
Where after you're talking, watch.
Silent, it's a silent.
Okay, it's silent, yeah.
Yep, is he considered, is he in the limits?
No.
He gets city fire, just like your way all day.
Yeah.
Same thing.
He should probably be in it too.
So then he stopped, he stopped at, uh.
Well, that's what we're trying to do here, we're trying to, there's a, there's no reason.
I think basically, you, the way we have it is because that bottom line is a section line, is it not? Where Anderson's, um, garage is, it's part of a section line. So they went on the section line, and then that is also a, a section line going up and down, isn't it, north and south?
Quarter line.
A quarter line. And that, and so they wanted to square up the, the city's property, because that's so convoluted over there between Weegar's and you and, and, um.
But why did they have to go in that box square?
Because that's where, because that's where the quarter line is in the section line.
Yeah, I know.
And we could do, you could do a, you know, but then it's not squared up. And I'm just explaining why it's done that way.
But my pins are on.
Yeah.
On, off the section line.
Uh, and that's when they determined that the section and the quarter line were. And, and I'm not saying a hortegans, I'm just saying, that's why it's like that, is because it's easier to measure when it's a section line and a quarter line than trying to figure somebody's property from somebody's property and going, you know, kittywampus and, and doing all that. It is why it's that way. Is my understanding, is why we did it that way.
I don't, I just go onto that.
And for like, uh, for many years, I guess, wherever it doesn't hold the time, you have to use a gentleman, kind of square it off.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anybody else send me the parcels? Yep?
I have parcel four, cause I'm there here. Um, so I, you know, mostly a question.
Sure, yeah.
Why now? I've been here for, you know, a while, and I just purchased that section of land, which is land in the last, year, year and a half. Um, so why now? That's my question.
Okay.
And I haven't answered.
Okay. Anybody wanna help this, this Debbie with the response to that? I guess, which, four, you said?
Yep.
Yep, alright.
Number twenty-four.
Okay. So right there, so what part of the, I guess, part of the, I guess, uh, gallon?
Gallon, yeah.
Proper, yeah. So really, what kind of, I guess, prompted the smaller lots was, was I guess, Meiser had, Meiser had purchased this one here, and the building, and at that time, you know, it's top of a hole, and, um, so then, he said he was okay with getting, getting annexed in. And, um, you know, and now that we have these lots, that they're legal, legal, I guess, layouts, and it's kind of all one now. That's why we're gonna go all the way around and join this into the city property. Which is what was, I guess, you know, I guess, we're probably only, or I guess this lot here, point four?
Point four.
Yeah.
Four, yeah.
Point four, yeah, so, I mean, there's that was in their backyard and, um, you know, I guess, we have a street, I guess, that leads up to this here and.
Okay, that's fine. Then my next question is, is taxes, okay. So, or, you know, compared to what I paid for taxes now, how will that go up? Cause I really don't pay that much for taxes right now. And then also, will there be assessments added for, just like the other homes are getting a certain, you know, because of the street project? Is that gonna get tapped down to that? Or does it not just be access?
Well, I mean, the last part of it is that, you know, on these, on these, on these current current, I guess, assessments, that won't get added to that, because it's not, that was not part of the school. That was not part of the, of the district, I should say, so, you know, but I mean, down the road, it could. And the taxes, I know that I had another person, you know, who was the boss, like, one of these, one of these lots back there. And, and I think their total tax bill was like a hundred and ten bucks or something. And I think I just ran the numbers roughly, the way that I thought it would be in it, was like twenty-five bucks more, but, you know, that's just me running the numbers. I don't know if anyone else.
Because the larger your property is, the more, you know, Greg's back there, he's our special assessment committee, but, you know, there's, the formulas they use for special sets, which is new front, front footage. And then it's also square footage, Greg.
Correct.
So your square footage, all angry. Right, but you didn't live in a cul-de-sac, but you're right.
It's gotta be square footage.
Yeah, you, you know, it's still, it's still, yeah, still, you still get a small front foot.
And provide some explanation in, in this particular area here. Uh, so that it makes it easier for, for all of the city provided functions with regard to fire, police, and things like that there. When you, when you have small little segments all intertwined in there, and that some are city, some are not city, is, then it makes it a little bit harder, and it's not, not that our, our city services are going to say, well, wait a minute, that, that. city services are going to say, well, wait a minute, that, that twenty-four there is, is county, so if we get a, a brush fire or something out there, we're not gonna, we're, we'll make you call over to the county or something like that. So it's a, it's an opportunity and, and as, as Casey was commenting on the Meisner property up there, we had some discussions because there was, there was some discussion early on about water service and different things like that. And, uh, that stemmed then, the, the process of going down the path of annexing that in. And it just made sense to us at the, at the time, looking at it to say, well, since we're going to, to work on that particular one, we're gonna spend the money updating drawings and everything like that, we, we might as well fit the rest of that in there so that all becomes then part of the city proper. Cause it does, it does seem kind of odd, if, if you consider it that right in the middle of town practically, you would have little segments in there that were not part of the city of Hazen. Not sure why it was like that to, to begin with, but that's, that's kind of the thought between, behind this particular area here, in my mind.
Okay, so this is kind of. Um, so to me, I think that the city and whoever this public hearing falls under, um, this decision's already made. Are you really, are you really gonna be swayed by what we say here? And why would, when you do make final decision, when is that decision made?
Well, well Debbie, first of all, thank you for being here and absolutely, what you have to say is important. Um, I'm not sure if I've heard from you that, why you don't think it should be, or, other than I know you wanted the property for a long time. But it is now, you know, like, like these guys talked about, and we are trying to get this all, take care of the, the correct way. You know, it's been, you know, incorrect for a long time.
I'm not objecting to being annexed or anything.
Sure.
I kind of, um, sympathize with this gentleman back here, but I'm just, you know, I think you've already made up your minds, really. I don't know that what we say, I just feel like what we say isn't gonna make a difference.
Well, I, may, maybe you think that way, but you are here and there's a reason why you're here, so. Um, hopefully that you, you feel like the due process is.
So is there not a process that we have to follow?
Well, we, we, we published in the, in the paper for, for two weeks, correct?
Yes.
And so that then afforded opportunity then for a letter to be written and a letter has been written saying uh, objecting to that within that period of time. So that's part of the process. Then we have the public hearing here. And folks that, that have filed their, their disagreement have opportunity to represent that disagreement. There, there then subsequently would be more steps, Pat, maybe you can explain, uh, if we were to say, with all due respect, we, we would like, the city would like to move forward with that. There, there's a next step in that process and, and, and what is that, Pat? There, there's two paths that we would go down. We would say, okay, thank you and, and yeah, we, we agree with that and then everything stops with, with that particular.
The areas that have been protested.
Yes.
If there's sufficient number of month acres, they can protest out from the annexation.
Okay.
Which is the higher, because that's a standalone unit.
Okay.
It's not connected to any other annexation. Uh, Mr. Goins is similar, cause he protested. The other ones haven't been protested. If there was still a disagreement, then it would go to mediation or the administrative law judge, uh, will decide if, if the city could in fact annex that property.
Okay, does that, does that make sense, yeah?
Protested annexation, just like an explanation as to why, why now?
Right.
Yeah, and so that's what you've given.
Right, okay. So in, so in the situation in, in the back of the room there, you're saying he's the sole owner of that particular section? No.
All of the property.
But, but the majority of the property, over, over fifty percent or whatever the measurable amount may need to be, and so if he opts out, then that basically kills off that whole group of, that unit. Okay. I just wanna make sure that, that the audience understands the, the process that we, we go through here.
Well, thank you for that explanation, man.
She's actually one four.
One four?
Of the property owners.
Got it.
Then, Pat, do we either respond by letter to the, the, the protester?
When you make your final decision, you'll leave those out, areas out that.
And then protested out.
And then protested out.
Okay.
And, yeah, of course, there'll be notification.
Okay, any other public input?
Okay, I'm still gonna go back to what, you know, if, when we purchased that property and then, um, from Steve Allen, you know, there was, it was an interesting list of things that were allowed on that. I'm kind of failed barring, I can tell, you know, I couldn't fill the holes, but I could do all things that is definitely. Um, so I'm assuming that will change to accordance with city, um, rules and regulations or whatever. So right now, we have a fire event there. I'm just wondering, is that allowed?
I'm assuming it is, I, I.
Yeah, it's, it would still be classified as agricultural property unless there's action taken by the planning and zoning board, which will have another hearing to change it from the agricultural use to a residential use, commercial use or whatever.
See, there's no other input. Monty, you don't, you have big determination now on?
That's up to me.
Okay, alright. So does the board want to take the action on either protested parcels?
Is it correct to say that all that have been protested at this point were the majority landowners on that? So any of the protests, protests that we received on the, the six parcels, those that were protested were pretty landowners and so those would be protested out. The other ones, we did not receive any protests on those. So they would be eligible then for, for us to move forward with in the annexation process. So if we were to, to make a move tonight, we would basically make a motion to move forward with those that did not protest out. And communicate to those that did protest out that they would not be part of the annexation process.
We should do that actually, in, in the public hearing and do it as part of your regular.
You make that motion and everything is part of the regular.
Yeah.
Yeah, very good.
Alright, so we do not take official action then during the annexation public hearing, correct? Okay. Alright, so looking at our agenda, where do we add that on, Monty?
You just go back and do your regular meeting and you can make the motions.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, then at this time, we will close the annexation public hearing. And we will remain in the regular meeting at this time. And we are still on the subject of the protest properties, parcels. And we will at this time take action on, on these items if the board wishes. I got a question about the Dallas property. I thought that he wanted it. Wanted it annexed, and it would be a next quarter.
He did not make requests. There were times when he said he wanted, you know, that he didn't think he wanted it. Until it came up that it was actually petitioned and noticed, he decided he didn't want it.
So I'm looking for a motion to go ahead with those unprotested parcels of property.
And the protested. So.
They're moving forward would simply be the communications back to protested landowners or, or.
So they, they know about the.
Okay.
That they would not be moving forward in the annexation process.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Wolf to move forward with removing the protest, protested properties from the annexation process. Is that what you said?
And continuing forward with.
And continuing forward with the uncontested parcels to be annexed.
Clarification, but it'd be easier to say that your motion is to annex parcels with one. What was it, one, four, and six?
Isn't that what I just asked?
It's less, it's less words.
Monty, you're the one taking notes a minute, so you're, what you write down is the gospel. Okay, we have a motion by Wolf.
Second now.
Second by Pillar. Discussion. Casey? So now the only ones that are gonna get annexed in is like the area west of the house. And the, I guess, lift station. And the other one's gonna be. Parcel one. Parcel four. And parcel six. On reverse motion. Any more discussion? Any more discussion? Wolf call.
Wolf.
Hi.
Keller.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Obedor.
Hi, motion carried. Very good, Debbie, good answer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Be safe for us to meet you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good bet. Okay, um, I'm trying to go back to reports, um, and a couple of items I, I guess I wanna bring up for discussion. Greg is here, um. Greg and I talked today a little bit about the, the assessment process and the, uh, the parts of the, the people, people and property are excluded from, from the from the district. And I guess, part of me is pretty torn about, um, the process and especially the, the inner base property. Uh, first of all, Greg, thank you, uh, thank you and your committee for what you guys have done and are still working on. And, uh, you know, it's one of those, one of those, uh, processes that's such a joy to go through. And the people just love every decision you make. There's no perfect way to do this process that makes everybody happy. Um, I guess I, I'm, I'm torn how to, how to proceed if, if, if the special assessment board does not make any changes, you know, that's gonna, their recommendation will come to us to say, stay the way it is, or they may have some recommendations to make some adaptations or corrections, or I'm not sure of the protest letters you got, Greg, how you, what you're, what you're dealing with with that right now, but what, what kind of answers are we gonna give? The community members, um, that have concerns other than what Greg did a nice job the other night explaining um, repeatedly. Um, but it still, it still makes people like me say, yeah, but, yeah, but. Um, so we need to be prepared to one way or the other respond to people. Um, and it's, it's probably not gonna be what people want to hear. So does anybody have any questions for Greg? Or the process, um, or how we can make, make some make changes or, I don't know, I just, I, I, I wanna talk about this now because the thirtieth is gonna come fast. And we're gonna be in the big hall and we're gonna have a lot more people. And I don't wanna sit there saying, I don't know, or gee, sorry. I wanna, I wanna be a little more intelligent than that.
Is there any way in, in preparation for the thirtieth, I'm assuming there are going to be con- contestings that, that come to you guys, you're gonna make your particular decision on those. And I'm guessing that if the, the initiator of those documents to you isn't happy with your feedback, they will be here in person on the thirtieth to have a similar discussion with us. And, uh, in preparation for the thirtieth, if, if there are folks that have contested with you, that you guys said, well, this is our process. Sorry, but, you know, it would be opening up Pandora's box for us to treat your situation differently as, as we move forward. I understand there's, there's a method to that madness. And, and sometimes making variance to that can have serious repercussions as you move forward. I would like to, as a, as a commissioner, be prepared to, to understand the process well enough that when that same contesting comes to, to us, we, we can, we can look at it and we can make an educated decision and not no disrespect, an emotional decision. Because intuitively it just, it's maybe in our minds stinks that that maybe this, this company is not getting hit with all the traffic going up and down that, that road that just got resurfaced and stuff like that. There is a method to the process and I just want, like I say, I wanna be prepared to be able to, to have an intelligent conversation with those individuals.
I have sixteen different protestor pages.
Sixteen, okay.
That will have documentation on them on why it's done that particular way.
Okay.
Um, the concern I would have for the city commission, or this, uh, one of the biggest things we need to consider is like the day where you annex property, um, the one I won't use as a good example is Hanson's property. If you take the number of lots that property represents and the drainage it has, if you treat it the same as everything else, it gets hit pretty hard. And that's only because a general lot is right around three hundred dollars, which doesn't sound much, but when you have, once you pull it into a hundred lots, you're up to thirty-two thousand dollars. Is that land at that point worth that much? I mean, is it, is it agriculture? Right now it's zone residential. Is it B use residential? The problem then becomes is you have other empty lots in town too, so.
I was gonna turn around and ask you that same question.
Different than another. And it, it gets to be very difficult. Now, the reason it's done the way it is, it's only square foot area. So if someone buys property, they are buying that amount of property, so there does come a little bit of, uh, realistic expectation that if it's in city elements and it's residential property, it's gonna be taxed or assessed at that rate. But it is not assessed any additional frontage for roads it does not have.
Sure.
Um, another thing is, there are road, natural roads that would go up into that property. It was not assessed for what area that those roads would take. So if there's property on one side and you have a road that goes up, it was assessed for only what'd be equivalent to the lots on the front side. And that same pattern was used all the way through, so of like a million acres, it was taxed at sixty-nine percent of that because of the roads in the carry. But there is a legitimate question of, on these X, you know, X, the edges of town, what is the property, you know, worth or value? So that's a significant, something that the committee will have to consider. And then we always hit the emotion, the most emotional comes because of this person uses my road, or. I have these people driving down my road. If, the number of scenarios that opens up gets extreme, and it gets extreme really quickly to start. What it basically becomes is a usage tax. If someone drives down the road, are we gonna charge it? Cautionary thing about that is, if you say in the future, you wanna annex these properties, you wanna grow. We're gonna indicate to them people that, you know what, when we grow, we'll be after that, that, that assessment, that extra tax. Even if we're not working in your area. Because that becomes the problem with those external areas. You really don't do much work on them. When you do, it's extremely expensive. But they're still gonna drive into town, that's the reason you want them in city limits, you want them to be part of those towns, you want them to shop, you want them to buy here. But you really have to be careful once you say, because that outside circle starts using the roads to come internal, that they've gotta be charged more. The cautionary thing to do that is, is what you become is a circle. And you say, anybody on the outside pays for more roads than inside. So what you do is you eliminate your chance of growth because you basically set a pattern that says, anytime you expand. Those people are gonna end up starting to pick up more of the bill because they'll be driving inside. And the people on the inside are gonna wanna discount for the people on the external. So you eliminate your potential for growth that way. And then the other thing is, a developer comes and they look at those external roads, they're gonna. At this point, plan to pay for them as part of the development. But we're saying, no, you have to pay for them and they're also gonna charge you more because you're gonna drive on roads coming inside. It's very tricky, it becomes emotional because that's your way in, but that wasn't the intention for bringing those properties in. It was to get discounts from the roads in. It was your intention to get them into the city. So that's my concern with that.
So, so again, I would, I would like to have available prior to the 30th, just for opportunity to review. Your guys' documentation that you put together that ultimately will be submitted, and I don't know what, when you guys are gonna be prepared to turn that over to Monty and.
Hopefully done.
Okay. All right, so, so that would be available, and then, and then I would also like, you know, I heard quite a bit of conversation about. The, the groupings. Yeah, I'm trying to remember how you described those because it, it seemed like on some of those outskirts. That when you were in a cul-de-sac and, and one of the lower lots got hit, but then the next one up didn't, it sounded like there was a, a boundary, the way that you guys had defined blocks. Was that the great term?
That, that is exactly, um, it'd be much easier to show you on a map without trying to, to be a little show and tell more so you get. To get an idea how it works, 'cause if, if you're not looking at an actual property, not looking at actual maps, it's very difficult to explain.
Fair enough. Where, where does that map live?
Wolf.
Would you like to do it right now?
Could you, would you mind coming right here right now, Greg, and just. If you guys don't mind?
Actually. Do you know, are you on yours?
Thank you for having me bring it up.
A good example of cul-de-sacs here. If you're gonna do work on Eighth Avenue last year. You're gonna say, it's gonna start here and end here, 'cause this is the street, these are all the lots that border that street, okay? So what we're gonna do is say, we're going, we're going on both sides of this street until we reach a natural barrier, which over here is Ninth, so that's another street, they'll have to pay for that. Or if you come this way, it'd be Seventh. So when you do this work on Eighth, you're only charging one block here, but they're also gonna have to pay for that, so it's fair. Whereas in this side, you're gonna split when it comes to area boltens. And when it comes to the cul-de-sac, okay, when you come to Seventh now, you're gonna split these two lots, these two blocks, and these two are gonna define. The next area. And when it comes to a cul-de-sac, you say, how do you split this? Well, it's really easy with most of these because here's Lot 1, here's Lot 10, that, it's, it's actually a different parcel, it's a different block number. So you do 1 through 26, and it's, it's all there. Where it comes to a little more difficulty is when you start getting into the weird problems like up here. You see, the cul-de-sac comes up, you take 10 or you take this. Well, when you're doing this street here, you look at the backside, it only touches this property. So in this portion, you'd say, this lot would go up that side of the cul-de-sac. It's a way to be consistent amongst what touches the properties that are actually getting the work.
So, so is it fair to say then those other lots going around the cul-de-sac there did not come and contact them with. With a lot that, that touches the, the string that was enhanced?
Correct. See now, if you do work up in here, if you do work to this Park Avenue.
Which we just did a few years ago.
They need to pay for that. The work is, you know, very, if you do work on this street, this Park Place, these are gonna have to pay for this street, so is this one. Because they're touching that.
So if we pay at Park Place. These lots are gonna get hit, even though they don't access their property through Park Place, they access it over here.
Even if you do elbow woods up to here, this Park Place lot right here is gonna pay for the elbow woods because it drains. It touches the properties that are draining that way, okay? And, and why you have to do that is if you, Block 3, nice square, easy block. If you go to any, any street on both sides of it, you get this spreading pattern. Now, corners really vary in town. A corner could be on the east-west, could be on the north-south, they split. If you, it's the corners that you need to divide that extra space up. You need to, you need more lots, more area to pay for the corners. And it makes sense to charge by a block pattern because if I live right here, I'm more likely gonna use these corners than anybody else. Now, if you do this block pays for, you know, it's basically attached to the four blocks around it, this street here, it'd be these two, through this street here, it's these two. So you just, you pick out the two opposing. Now, what that does is it takes all four of these corners and averages them out over these four blocks. And then the next one, it averages up with the next four blocks. It takes those corners and it starts evening them up. When you start looking at the pattern as it goes through the city. One might be turned, but when you do the four blocks, it's gonna average itself up because it's gotta be turned therefore on the other side. So it does vary through town.
So that's like one, the other night, when Maxine Gary Beckwith right here, wanted to know why their property, which is the same size as this property. Why they, they live on the same street, but why their neighbor across the street paid a lot less than they do. And it's because they have. Beckwith paid these four sites, correct? And this neighbor pays those four.
Correct.
And that neighbor had less work on, on those four sites.
Or it can be also be, if this side of the property has the great big hospital on the other side. And if you look at the amount of area the hospital pays for versus that block.
It's paying a bigger.
The hospital's gonna pay a bigger portion. But that's also more fair to that resident because they cover a lot more traffic on that road because of that hospital right across the street. So.
So how is Ken Link? On his piece? Where's his block?
And he's one of those unicorns, very human talent, but he has a road here that doesn't get any work, very, I mean, just very seldom. So he gets charged for this, there's no hot, it's, it's, it's a one-sided property, he's only got one option. And you'll find that the same over here. This block here has really only got one street to drive out. If it, if it gets taken out, they have no other option. Most people have four. There's any good town that has three, and then you get very few that only have one.
And so now the properties on the northern tier of the, the, the city, they, they were not within the boundaries of the, the project, the district?
They're within the district. Because the entire city limits was put in this last, this last one.
Right, okay.
But the work here was done on Deapless. And it was only done up to. Up to where the gravel starts. So when the work is only done to here, we're only charging both sides of the block. We're not charging all the way up here either because it's the opposing sides of the street. But when you look at Divide, Divide drains this entire block, so it's picked that up. And that's where you get into this property, as mentioned here, if you look at Divide, it's got this great big property that comes down through it. And, and it becomes a. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, you count the number of lots, and it, it's equivalent to a lot of lots. But as an assessment committee, we have that problem too, where we say, okay, if it's empty, we're gonna need a discount, there are other empty lots in town. And what you really come into an issue is you'll have properties that a corner has the house, they bought the lot behind it. So it looks like it's one partial, but it still has two parcels, that other one is empty. So if you discount an empty lot, you have to start discounting all sorts of properties mixed up in one town. It becomes a problem. And we do not have data to exactly identify. What's on each property. You, you look at it, the map is pretty much how we determine primary properties.
And the business down on the, the southeast part of town there, the reason they, they got nothing was because the work enhancements to that street coming down there. Didn't stop prior to it actually touching their property.
Went across some railroad tracks. Okay. And that's one of the, that's one of the hard lines we draw, because if, if you take a look at Link's property. Even if there are a road back here, there, it's just plain impossible for him to drive across railroad tracks, it's illegal. Now. We come into the problem up here of Main. Main runs all the way across here, half of it's out of city limits. These lots have some drainage, they have a sidewalk in there, but it's still on Main Street, it's still a primary property. They don't pay unless they're listed as Main Street, they pay a 50% portion of that. But it comes down to, it's still a property that's got more value because it's got that visual effect right for me, in the future it might sell for that. So you can't really say just because it doesn't have access now, it doesn't have value from that, 'cause I'm a primary example of that. I live in this crazy property right here. Third Avenue until it gets to County Road is considered city.
At what point is that?
That's just at the end of the house here on the other side of that block, it's drawn right there. So you can say, oh, I got a, I got an alley and a tree burn and a sidewalk and all that, you can, I mean, you can make the argument. My property doesn't benefit from being right next to the County Road, it's louder, it's whatever. But on the other hand, I live right next to the County Road, in 30 seconds, I'm on the County Road and I'm gone. I don't have to drive through any other residential areas. If I wanna have a garage sale, I open a garage back here and I've got great visual.
I mean.
There comes that limit of what, what makes value to your property. If I wanna look for discounts, I can look for discounts. But if you wanna look for benefits of being there, there are also some of those. So that's where we get in to, we don't charge them 100%, but you still, you still border that, so you still have some benefit. And that's where we bundle these the 50% now.
You know, when you talk about this property north of, up here, that, there's a lot of emotional protest about these not, not getting hit because. They, they accessed their house through this road. And it's just like me or Mr. Link saying, well, he thinks more of the community, should probably share his expense, 'cause I drive down to one of the hospital. All the time, you know, like it, my, my daughter drives on Main Street from Sedex to Crowe's 20 times a night with her friends and burns up gas. You know, does she use it more than Darren Vant who lives on the port? I, and those arguments can be made all day long, I think, so. You know, it's, it's hard to say who, who should have to pay. Now, Mr. Link.
I'm not gonna debate the methodology used for the ta, for the assessments. I understand that. That's difficult tonight, I have to agree with the assessment committee. What is disturbing to me over the last three years, I have found discrepancies in the tax parcel compared to the ownership. And there's a lot of pieces of property in our community. And we don't have full-time staffing to keep shifting out any mistakes that have been made over the years. And they, they exist. But I, I think the real effort has to be made. To try to get this tax parcel. Computerized mapping up to date or more correct than what it is, it, it needs corrections. And. I would say that there are the majority of the people in this town that own property, and not only this town, every town. They don't understand unless they come in and they look at what is their tax parcel and they actually. Now we can see it through photos behind it, and they agree to it. But. The fact is that if they don't know the difference, that error isn't gonna come to the surface and be corrected. And that is maybe the only unfair part of the whole assessment is not. The proper application to the ownership of the property. The applica, the methodology seems good, now let's apply it to the correct property. That's, that's where we don't fall, honestly.
Well, that's, that's good to know, our comments, Ken, you know, that's something that, I'll work with Monty, I don't know if that's something that, between me and Monty in the county, or how we, how we alleviate that.
The only way that you correct that, you don't know that there's an error until you systematically go through every single property. And make the determination that your pins and your, and your plats and everything like that are 100% accurate, correct? The only time that it really exposes itself is when we maybe do a, a special little project or wherever, where we say, Mr. Link, will you go on there and, and check this all out? Or, or somebody sells or buys a property and they have it checked to, to, to make sure that everything is correct and the property lines are where. Everybody had put their fences and all that kinda stuff.
In the most part, that, that isn't necessary to, to start it. Each lock, a lock goes through it.
Yeah.
I think the special assessment committee. Brought to the surface some of these, and they're brought to the surface by the high dollar of assessment.
Sure.
Not saying the high dollar is in threat, it brings awareness to that piece of property. Those would be the ones to check. The ones that are in the problem are these little parcels outliers where they buy a portion of a block or a portion of a lot. So that, that is to be a problem, it's a little teeny parcel away.
Greg.
Being I have been doing this for 20 years, I've been keeping the data from assessment to assessment. Right now, we're up to a 13% error rate. And that's, that's more than one in every 10. The problem that I, me and Paul are just working on quite often is, you're dealing with multiple data packages. And, and some just can't be fixed on an extremely long, where, I mean, like, Mr. Link is right, you need to try, but there aren't a lot of these properties that. Comes down to the ability of being able to pull a list, and you're dealing with different data, you're dealing with different programs, you're dealing with change of staff that are taking.
change of staff, I don't know, I'm not trying to make excuses, but it comes to the point that a lot of this cannot be corrected. It has to be visually verified and that's what I've done with each and every property this year. Just visually look at and double check to make sure they're pure. And that's why our error rate is being quite high.
I always like to say, say on the egg, I guess, property that's down by the tracks, you know, I know, I guess Jerry was there and Nancy as well and when we, uh, as we, I guess, okayed them to build over there. You know, it's the county then, the county, I guess, never been like one of them, one of them to build that. The county here, so anyway, he said, okay, I guess you can come here, you know? And I mean, part of that deal was that they would help pay for these streets, you know, like Main Street and, and you know, and I might be wrong on this, but I think when Main Street got repaved, I think they did get charged. Charlie's a special on that plan.
Um, that is one thing, you should, we only assess our community. Now, there, there's a word we like to use called citywide. And that is something that could not be assessed in single property. We assess citywide and we divided that up at that time by area. Okay, so in the past, yes, we would take a city parking lot and assess it to everybody in town. A good example was the, um, senior citizen parking lot. There is an issue in my opinion of saying the paving of a senior citizen lot is beneficial, is, is a property improvement to somebody across town. Okay, that's kind of a slippery, is it an improvement to the city and, and therefore making improvement to your property? You know, you can almost make those second conjectures. But the problem is there's more direct benefit. It's not actual physical work to a property associated with drainage or associated with travel in and out of your property. This year, we only assessed, being the engineer gave us 108 different costs each and every block. Now, there is a portion of the city, the parking lots then, the parks and the, the county roads, the stuff we couldn't assess. All of that is then turned around and assessed back to the city. So the city hall has a, just one parcel has a $500 dollar charge there. That doesn't include trees and parks that aren't recognized in our measure. So I would imagine it's going to be a $550, $600, maybe a 10% for this entire project. We assess that back to the city. The city has to pay for that, but then they're going to charge that taxes over the next 30 years to recover that. It's a hit in the budget, I realize. But that is a more fair way to assess it because the assessment's going to come back based on value then. So an empty lot is going to get charged less for the, for the bike path than NERAS is. NERAS has got a lot of property and they've got a lot of capital or big bases. They're going to pay for the bike path, Main Street. They're going to pay for all of those things in a higher percentage than most of our citizens. But when it came to the special assessment, that hadn't been directly related to their problem. That does not mean they're not taxed for this work because they will end up paying more than the average person. It just wasn't printed in the paper because it's done in a different manner.
Well, then I guess I just want to say, I mean, I mean, you know, I guess the major reason why that I voted, you know, to, to, I mean, it's allowed them to build there, you know, just to help pay off the streets. I do understand the way about the property taxes, you know, as whatnot. And I also do understand about how that they don't benefit. This is, you know, this is a parking lot, you know, but I mean, you know, I guess, I don't either, I guess, you know, no way, but, but then yes, I guess I do pay less tax than them. But, um, you know, I do feel that, I mean, you know, Main Street and other streets that do lead up to them, I mean, I think they should pay some small share of those streets.
The, the problem then becomes if you decide to say they should pay more, who gets their discount? Well, because you can always run a street in the same, in the same particular, and if you look at the most expensive streets, they're not Main Street, they're not the heavily traveled Ford. They're Divide and Deapolis up there where, where we have water shipping. Once the engineer properly dis, designs that street and they have truck traffic going over there, it should break down more than any other road, designing property, build property. And we're not seeing extra expense from those areas. We're not seeing high expenses from Main. Our, our most expensive streets are the experts, the, the outsides by far, when they had to dig it down. In fact, the street on the north side of Main, yeah, it gets a lot of traffic, but you can't say it gets heavy traffic. And that, they had to dig out and replace. So it, you, you, you can make that argument, but if you can't prove it, are you just looking for a way to, to add a usage tax for that business? That, that's the cautionary thing I would say.
Well, I, I agree with Casey when that, when he did come, that was part of the, you know, the reason. There are a couple of reasons why we want to allow them to be there. One for our, our local egg producers that needed a facility nearby that the county wouldn't allow them to have on Highway 200. So this was the next, one of the, one of the options. And two was absolutely them helping take care of our, our streets and roads that they heavily access and use. Now, we've had a lot of complaints in the last five, six years from people that live on Ford about mud and dust and dirt and traffic and anhydrous, you know, not just anhydrous tanks going up and down and occasional leak, which thank God our fire department is very versed at it, would go and take, and take care of that stuff. But there is a lot of circumstances there that, that aren't in a formula that we can apply it. It's easily across the community. And I know Mark Baker was sitting here, and he was the mayor at that time, he, he would say the exact same thing. So I'm not sure, um, Mr. Link, were you able to work that? No, you just, you just, you just went out. So that's one of those deals where I, how do you, how do you put an equation or calculate that? Those things into this without saying, here's your, your user tax or playing a game of Monopoly, here you go.
That is great shared, you know, when you take a look at the, the value of that property there and the basis of which they pay them their city taxes, they're going to be paying more city taxes and arguably supporting the infrastructure in the city more than some of us with, you know, a, a city lot or, or whatever. So in, in effect, they are contributing to the community in that regard.
I, I would agree that they are contributing. It's a fraction of what I'm paying for one. You know, I think we could probably go down the list and we probably have hundreds of people that are going to pay more than what, what Dakota Egg is going to pay.
Now, I, I guess my opinion is that we, we've got a method that was used for this particular process. And, and I'm hard pressed to look at that and say, yeah, but the results aren't what I really wanted them to be. And, and then we, we made some kind of change to accommodate those in this scenario, that unique situation. Because I think once you open up that Pandora's box, then you're, you're really hard pressed as you move forward to, to not entertain them, somebody else coming to the table and say, yeah, but look what you did for, for these guys over there. And, and we, we play that game all the time when we, you know, grant variances and stuff like that. We need to be thinking ahead so that we don't create some of these peace Lutheran type right in the middle of the street scenarios and stuff for the future generations to have to deal with, so. I, I empathize with, with those that, that feel that there's inequities here because somebody's going up and down that, that road to, and it's the only way to get to their home. But with the methods that are used here, that is an attempt to be fair to everybody within the city. It's, it, it's the way the numbers crunch out. Just my input. Let's go.
No, you've got to do Third Avenue, Flonore. It's an arterial road. Greg himself, it's just for that. What is it? That's one that it's just the same thing as the fourth house, where do you stop?
Yep.
There are cities that treat things differently. You've not identified collectors and arterials. When it comes to those cases, if you have a major arterial, you assess it halfway between the other arterial. So there are other ways to deal with it, but like they said, that's opening Pandora's box. And at this point, I wouldn't recommend it. We're not building collectors and arterials to handle heavy traffic where they're costing a lot more money or with three lanes, returning lanes or traffic signals. So I don't, I would not make any changes, like these guys did a really good job.
Well, I just wanted to have this little discussion because I think it's very important that we are able to make some comments for our community to come up to their, their vast answer. Uh, I think there's more discussion to be had, um, unless, uh, maybe not this evening, but unless anybody has something else that they want to for sure bring up right now on this topic. Okay, Greg, you said you guys did have some stuff you're going to talk a lot about tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah, hopefully I should hear some of that.
Okay. Moving, moving on to, uh, 10A. Chicago Way Country, uh, ad.
We have not participated in this advertisement in the past. Chamber Parks and Rec has more gears towards the recreational. I will leave it up to you.
So what would we be doing different than, uh, than what those folks are doing in that particular publication?
Nothing really, a lot would be similar to what CBB or Chamber does as far as just promoting all the different things that are available in town.
I guess my, my opinion would be that that's more or less their charter. And I don't know that that's part of our charter as, as city proper to. I mean, that's, that, that's why we have those particular arms of our city, I believe. I'd just be curious if, if there's been any thought as to what, what you would even put in there that would be meaningfully different than, than what those parts of the organization would be putting in there. Because they're arguably looking to sell our community. Yes, sir.
Was there a time that the city offered some incentives for people to move here with forgiveness of property taxes for a certain period of time or something?
Well, we still do that, we still have that.
I think that's what some cities have, they maybe they don't have, I don't know, dealers, I don't know if they still do that. They used to say, you know, move here, we'll give you, we've got lots, we'll give you this kind of a discount or something. That was more of a city decision, so they had to do the advertising for that. But I don't know, you know, what, what's left of the incentives here anymore in the community. It's a good time for product, for people who could now choose to live away from where their actual job location is and physical location.
For argument's sake, let's, let's say we, we select one of those. Who, who puts?
She'll put it together and send it out.
She just mocks something up and then, and then puts it on? This is, this is a publication coming out of the BHG family?
Well, there are no motions, no, right? Please don't overrate it. My surveillance, Monty?
Provided a couple of quotes we got from two different companies, one here in Bismarck. The other one is actually, uh, was in Michigan. Again, this would all be part of, once we have our new van purchased, we did request funding for surveillance as part of that grant as well. So this would be to update all of the surveillance and all of our trucks and vehicles, the three houses and the two vans.
All covered by grant money?
Uh, at least 80%.
80%?
Unless COVID keeps going on, then it's 100%.
Is there one that you particularly vote over the other?
No, they're, they're both comparable systems, so I sent it out to the bus advisory board. All the recommendations coming back from them was to go with the Provision USA. This is the same company that would purchase the body cams for the.
The 9270?
Yeah, the 9270.
And so 80% of that would be covered and then the remaining portion would come out of there, the busings?
Yes.
I'm going to, uh, purchase cameras from, from Provision USA. Okay, we have a motion by Sturridge.
Second.
Second by Wolf. Discussion.
That ties back to them into City Hall here or what's that tie you to?
It's, it's actually self-contained.
All self-contained on there?
Maybe just pull memory cards or download a video from the right possibility.
Okay.
Okay, motion is second, new discussion. Roll call.
Sturridge, uh, Wolf?
Aye.
Hiller?
Aye.
Moenauer?
Aye. Let's carry it.
Criminal bills.
Criminal bills as presented.
Okay, motion by Hiller Bill, criminal bill. Second, second by Sturridge, discussion. Roll call.
Hiller?
Aye.
Sturridge?
Wolf?
Aye.
Moenauer?
Aye, let's carry it. Meeting adjourned.
Yeah.